I'd just like to say that it would appear we could also make cuts to the budget as proposed. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
It just wasn't listed as an option?
Correct. Thank you for pointing that out. All right, so moving on to, on page eight, we have all the revenues and expenditures listed. The first item, first fund is the village board, Fund 1100. Are there any questions or discussion points regarding that budget?
I guess, you know, I guess in the scheme of things, perhaps I should have said something earlier. I guess when I'm looking at what we're going to do going forward here with the four options that we have, and it looks like we're looking at possibly spending $150,000 on a survey about, I believe it would, is it government operations to overview all government operations? Is that?
Is that the organizational study?
Organizational study?
On line 52920?
Right.
Mm-hmm.
If we approve that, it would seem to me that the wise, the advisable thing to do then would be, before you approve something that could be affected by the outcome of this, that might be a place you want to pause a purchase, right? So if you decide there's something, some service that we might be cutting in the future, you don't know until the survey's done, that might be the first place that you say, well, let's hold off on that until we get the results of this survey. Because I'm, can I assume that this is something that would be done in 2026, so we would have it for budget advisement for 2027?
Yeah, I believe that that was the overarching timeline that was presented.
Okay, so I guess that's one way I would look at the budget then is, if we're going to approve the $150,000 for the operation organizational study, we should look at the other expenses in light of that.
In, meaning?
As I said, if there's something that we may be changing about how we operate or service levels.
Right.
Why would you then fund brand-new equipment for something that you think that may not be going forward in the future?
Right, so I believe at a, at the previous, at a previous meeting, we decided that we were, as a board, that we were not going to look at service level reductions within the course of this budget.
Correct, but for 2027.
Exactly.
Right.
So yeah, the, the purpose of that study is timed to be useful for us in preparation for that. Does that answer the question?
Right.
Yeah, okay.
I would say in my brief time on the board, this is probably the largest study expense I've ever seen.
Mm-hmm. It's significant. All right, municipal court, any, any points of discussion? Next fund is village manager, 1410. Were there any questions that were submitted pertaining to the village manager's budget?
I guess my first question would be, how soon do we anticipate filling that assistant manager spot?
I'm hoping to solidify candidate this month.
Select the candidate this month?
Mm-hmm.
So it will start already in the 2025 budget? Salary costs? Because he would start, he or she would start presumably in November?
Correct.
Okay.
Oh, that recalls, trustee Stokbrand, was it you who asked about a hiring freeze?
Right, so the assistant village manager is 133,000, that includes salary and benefits? That's the, okay.
I think if there is a proposal, I guess, is it something that, are you going to propose that we not fill open positions?
Well, I guess it depends. At the end of the day, I mean, if you want to take a temperature of the room, having listened to the streetlight appeals and the public feedback about the parking lot, I personally can't see increasing the levy above 3%. And so I, I just feel that there was just too much, there was an impression that there was, we're squeezing the middle class out of Shorewood. And so I think it's important to stick to the 3%. And so, you know, a lot of things are on the table for me.
Okay, I think tonight would be time to read the room in terms of whether a hiring freeze is palatable for the board either as an across-the-board strategy for managing costs moving into 2026, or one position over another. Trustee, Arndorf? No?
Generally.
I wouldn't have a blanket freeze. I mean, I wouldn't go there with regard to the assistant village manager position. I mean, I did support reviewing that role. I, I would have to think about how I would want to vote on, or how, whether I'd want to proceed differently now that we have someone in hand, but potentially, but could be worthy of discussion, but it would have been good to make a decision.
That's right. Yeah, the board did previously vote against reviewing that position through strategic initiatives. So I wasn't anticipating that there'd be a change in approach regarding salaries and positions within the course of this budget. However, if the board gets to that point, we'll leave time at the end of tonight for a wrap-up discussion of those types of strategies. Yes, trustee Warren?
Yeah, just to weigh in here, I, I agree with trustee Stokbrand's point that we need to keep the levy, the levy limit down, or levy down. That said, I, I wouldn't agree with a hiring freeze specific to the village manager, assistant village manager's position. That's work that needs to be done. And the only thing that would happen if we did that now is without a plan, it would just be kind of parceled out to other people within the office who are already operating it. So while I certainly agree with keeping levy down, this is something that we reviewed in the strategic initiatives, and I wouldn't support bringing it back up. Position that we have in hand and that we need to fill.
Any other comments regarding that position in general? Okay, if it's something that we need to get clarity on, at the end of the meeting, we'll, I'll make a note to return to it. Other questions or points of comment, points of discussion around village managers' budget? All right, moving on to clerk services?
Oh, I'm. Last one, I apologize.
Yeah.
I just see that we're still paying for Zoom. Do we, and we're, are we operating on Zoom right now? Do we go back to Zoom? We went back to, we went back to Zoom? What happened?
Like.
Sorry, I, I got lost. I thought we went to something else.
Like 18 months ago.
And now we're back to Zoom.
Three years.
God, I can't, I can't keep track. My bad. Okay.
You didn't realize because it was working. That's why you didn't, you didn't realize it was, it was happening.
Okay, and now back to our regularly scheduled program, clerk services. All right, budget detail is on page 16 of the packet. Any questions or comments? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to finance department, Fund 1510.
President McCain?
Yes.
I'd like to propose including a, an allowance for, I'm looking for the word, the, the public accounting finance report. It's a simplified version of the CAFR or ACFR. Mark Emanuelson, for years, I believe, did a, it was a CAFR at the time. It was a more complete accounting posted online for everyone to see. The, the, in speaking with Christina, the popular accounting finance report is a simplified version. North Shore Fire Department has one. It's really quite helpful. Instead of telling someone to look at the budget, which is a lot of pages, instead of expecting our village manager to do, let's talk, which is wonderful, but I mean, you know, there's so much bandwidth here. I think it would be good if we had something similar. I was looking at other municipalities in the county, and they offer something, some of them have different names, finance in a nutshell, or something like that. But I think it would be good if we had something simplified that is written at a level for someone with no finance background to look at on our website. It could be posted, which sort of brings me to another thing, which is, I probably should have brought up, you know, it's not in here, but our website compared to other municipalities in Milwaukee County is really not very good. And I, I should have mentioned it sooner, and that's, that's, I take that responsibility. But it, it gets to sort of the point of, you know, there are other villages or municipalities that have an explanation of the shared revenue and different things that affect the budget, levy limits and things like that. But I think the most important thing would be for us, with all the questions about our finances now, because we're doing so many aggressive different things to finance our village, I think a PAFR would be a wise thing, and so I'd like to see that added. I believe Christina had said it'd be between $10,000 and $15,000 for LNA to do it for us. Is that generally?
What was it?
Between 10,000 and 15,000? And so for those reasons, I'd like to see that added to an expenditure for finance.
Right. In the past, procedurally, we have kind of kept a list of requests to either add or remove items. Would the body like to continue with that practice, or would you like to take up consider, consensus reaction as they come up in the discussion?
I think the list is, is helpful. I think the way we've been doing it, for me personally, has been helpful because in the moment, we could all agree on something, but then when we take a holistic look at all the different things we're adding, those things add up, and then we're looking at hiring freezes and big things where, you know, little things like this could easily be taken up, so.
Okay, thank you for that affirmation. Anybody else? Does it seem reasonable? It works for me, okay. All right, so there's a request, if you would make the note that there's a request to add 10 to 15, estimate of 10 to 15,000 dollars in finance for the popular report. And then perhaps a note for 2027 initiatives to look at the website? We could put a pin in it? Yes?
Yeah, it might be helpful just to go, go through whatever we list we have at the end of the meeting, just to get a sense of what we really want to prioritize based on the evaluation.
Mm-hmm. All right. Other, um, were there any other finance department items?
There seemed to be some confusion about on page 24, this, the Microsoft 365 annual, it looks like it it went up 11,000 just to get the authentication piece?
Mm-hmm, did we, yeah, I saw that.
Correct.
Did everybody get the clarification they needed on that?
If my understanding is accurate. And is that a one-and-done, or every year will we? Or is it a part of a contract? Good for three years, or?
If you could use the microphone?
There was an increase in 2022 for multi-factor authentication to the software contract of 11,000 dollars. It's likely annual, but we can, for you.
So in 2022, it just is in fiscal year 2026, MFA, multi-factor authentication, I guess is 11. So I'm curious, why are you talking about 2022?
That's note of an incremental change that took place in 2022. It's part of the licensing. So it went up in 2022. I understand the confusion that no probably should be, shouldn't have been included, but the cost of the Microsoft licensing is, has been updated to about 23,000 dollars total. That's the cost of the licensing, which includes MFA.
Annually?
Yes.
Thank you.
So to recap, this is an annual cost that we're, we should be expecting from here on? Okay.
I just have a question on that, maybe something to add to the list. Would be, could we look at other alternatives to, you know, Microsoft emails? Like a lot of businesses don't use Outlook anymore. You know, there's Gmail and other things that are free, so you know, the company I worked for, we had like 200 people and maybe five Microsoft licenses, because everybody was using all the free stuff. So maybe there's an opportunity for some savings there.
That would be a 2027 initiative?
Yeah.
I would think. Okay, so we'll take it out of the, just got, course of this, discuss, within the scope of this year's budget discussions. Yes, trustee?
Quick clarification, are we going to add, like, have two lists here of things for 2027 and things for this year's budget that we'll discuss then afterwards and prioritize? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, anything that would be considered as an initiative, we'll just, you don't have to vote on that now, so.
Right, got you, okay.
Exactly, thank you. All right, moving on to, it's general administration on 1900. I did see a couple of questions room regarding general admission, administration. Trustee Stokbrand, did, did you get the answers you were seeking?
I think I did, thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion, questions? Proposals? All right, hearing none, moving on to the police department, Fund 2100.
I have a capital question regarding the police department. Do you want me to wait?
I think wait till capital?
Okay.
Thank you.
This relates to some others. So the credit card fees are still shown as expenditures, and am I missing where they're counted as revenue, or did we decide not to start that until '26, where we're going to start to recap those fees? Not make money, but just recap the fees in all those areas except water and sewer utility?
If you look at the other revenue line, you'll see that it's increased pretty, pretty much, a pretty, a pretty decent amount.
What's, what's the category I'm looking at to see?
Pardon me?
Where's the category I'm looking at to see credit card reimbursement? In each, in each of these departments?
It's a revenue?
Right.
Miscellaneous revenue, I think, is, if you're looking at the police department, for example.
Okay, so can we put in there parentheses, credit card fees, so we know that's what that is? So that's why it increases 1,500%?
Yes.
Excellent, thank you. If you could just have, for clarity, miscellaneous revenue gives me no idea that this is recouping credit card fees.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
There you go, yeah. It's kind of dramatic, though. Um, are there other, just, we can handle this on the side, but in, to the extent that there are other revenues in miscellaneous revenue, I think it should be a detailed note on a subsequent page for, for clarity. All right. The, the traffic barricades proposal, trustee Stokbrand, was that within the scope of the police department budget, or is it public works or?
I don't know, this is one of those gray areas.
Okay. And is it capital or operational?
I don't, what do you prefer?
Capital? Okay, well then.
The inquiry was about modular barricades, which we did not include in the capital budget. The $40,000 referenced by Kathy is a DPW expenditure for class-three barricade, class-three barricades. The modular barricade quote, which I included in the packet, is 259,650 dollars.
Okay.
It's not included in capital as a request.
Okay, I think then let's hold this discussion until the capital budget, and then wherever they lay, we can talk about it. Thanks for the clarification. All right, moving on to, there's the second page of police department budget. Expenditure detail.
There's some red on these pages. Is there anything I should know about text being in red, numbers being in red?
I'm sorry for that, that was kind of an internal, for myself, just to look at something. So.
Okay. Yes.
And the next version that's coming out, there'll be no red, there'll be no blue.
Okay.
I'm sorry about that.
So blue pertains to a, a change that has a detail with it, and then red?
No, the, the blue pertains to the person responsible for that number.
Okay.
And so does the red, too.
Oh.
And, and I'm sorry for that. It won't be in the next version.
That's great. Thank you for checking, trustee Stokbrand. Okay, moving on to planning and development, Fund 2400. Questions, proposals, discussion?
So here there's blue background as opposed to blue text, is that?
That's me again, I'm sorry.
Okay.
You won't see that.
It has no meaning, okay, great, good to know.
We just get a clarification on other service contract fees? And the, that increases?
Any, is, is Bart online? Oh, there you go, sorry.
I might defer that to David, quite honestly. I, I'm not expecting additional other service contract fees. The number that is higher this year relates to needing to use strand for a zoning review. That money was reimbursed to us, and so I think when the projection was developed, it was developed based on a belief that that perhaps would carry over into next year. And so the main use of other service contract fees is for our commercial electrical inspector, which we need to have. And then when we do use strand for a zoning review, we recoup that through miscellaneous revenue by charging that back to the applicant. So I would just, I'll, I'll work with David to confirm the number is not intended to increase dramatically. So that's my perspective. I think it's just that, within the draft, it wasn't caught.
Thank you.
All right, and we have the request detail. And then moving on to other public safety. Any discussion?
Mm-hmm. On page 32, I was trying to understand, so the columns are not, they're chronological, but a different direction, and we've got 2026 for North Shore Fire Department, but I didn't see anything for Bayside?
For communications, for dispatch? It's called dispatch services?
It says Bayside Communications, there's no column. Am I, I, I see 23, 24, 25, but I should be looking for a 2026 column, right?
You're saying that would be the first column there that's just missing, and it's just?
I don't know.
Yeah.
But there's also no numbers for Bayside. For 20, if that's the column, it should say 2026?
Again, this is, this is on me. There's, again, in another version, it does have the, the 2026 information. So it's an omission from the report in this version that was, that was distributed on the 15th of September.
It's in the previous version?
No.
Oh.
There, is, one of the things about the, the budget processes, you may or may not know, is that it's, it's constantly being updated and changed based on new information that's coming in. And I, at, at, at the time, when this was distributed on the 15th, it, that was, that information wasn't there, so it, it wasn't included.
Okay.
You're looking at the detail sheet, I'm assuming?
Yeah, page 32 of the packet today? Though I don't see a blatant number for 2026 for Bayside.
Right, like I said, that's the packet from the 15th, and it has since been updated.
Oh, okay.
And it's just an omission, so at, at some point, we will, we will be distributing in an updated version of the packet. We didn't want to, we were thinking of sending out another packet last week, but we decided not to, just to prevent a lot of confusion on having different, several different versions out. From the point of view of what's changed, there's a summary at the beginning of the packet that kind of says, here's the items that changed. So the support detail that you're looking at wasn't available at the time that this was submitted, so it was based on estimates. So if you're looking at the budget, this details a detail that supports the previous page. And at the time of the, that, the release of this budget, that support wasn't there.
I'm sure you'll send out an updated version when it's appropriate, right?
We're just people that have so many.
Got it. Got it.
I, not to belabor it, but on page 26 of our electronic packet this evening, it's the other public safety fund 2900. And under expenditures, line 52300 says dispatch services. And when I look across, there's a 2026 number that says $478,436. Does nobody else see that?
I think you're on, are you, do you have a different page number? Because I, I'm, you must have a different page number on yours, I just.
26 is police on my file. Oh, I am, okay.
31 is the page.
So I think you're just in the budget, not the overall packet, so you're off by whatever the
Got it.
first couple of pages are.
It's page 31 in the packet.
Okay.
I'm looking at what you're looking at.
All right, okay.
I guess maybe if, if the, if the budget packet had its own page numbers might be helpful.
Noted. Okay, so the $478,000 number is a previous estimate that's going to be updated when we look at the final numbers. All right, moving on to Department of Public Works, the 3000s, affectionately known as.
I just had a question about, so I'm on page 34 of the packet, under street lighting, traffic devices. Looking for some good news, electric street lighting goes down 4.8%, is that because of some conversion to LED? Oh. You can get back to me, I'm just, I'm hoping.
Let's go with yes.
That's not.
Okay. I can dream, next year, we're going to see a big decrease.
I mean, we're going to see a decrease, right? I mean.
How can we not?
How can we not?
How can we not? Oh, I did have a question then, on 35, the second line, refuse recycling disposal, we've dropped any predictions for 25, 26 for special collections and Saturday recycling?
That actually was a request from me, that's more of a, a bookkeeping, we'll call it, or just how those costs are displayed in the budget. I have to annually report to DNR costs associated with recycling. And so pulling out the Saturday hours into a line by itself that didn't include special collections was my request. So I think we're still working through parsing those numbers out, but the overall hours are not going to change, just how they appear in each line.
So are you saying you'd like to see that item divided into two line items?
No, what I'd like actually to see is a special collection, wages go into just the regular salaries and wages line for refuse collection. And then that line item would simply be Saturday recycling.
Cause that would, wouldn't that be a shared cost with Whitefish Bay?
Which?
The Saturday recycle?
Uh, no, the way the contract is set up now is we provide one person and they provide one person, and we each pay our own wages.
Oh, so there's no reimbursement?
Correct.
Okay, so there will still be special collections and Saturday recycle?
It's, special collections will move up a line, and then it will just say Saturday recycle.
Thank you.
Other requests or discussion pertaining to the public works budget?
Um, I guess I did see department supplies under street and alley, is that where other traffic control barricades flashers, is that where we would put, if we want to beef up our safety equipment for East Criterion, Fourth of July?
Mr. Dan?
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Are you making a request to do that?
We might as well put that in the conversational topics.
I don't care what, you know, it's up to the accountants to determine which, how they would parse it, how they would put it, but if, it would be up for discussion.
As a, as a budget, as a budget item, maybe that's what we just add to the list, as a budget item to talk about at the end, is, is extra barricades.
Yeah, let's do it during capital.
I had one question about landscape forestry plantings, page 40, Capitol Drive bed restorations, do we spend $10,000 every year restoring those Capitol Drive? These are the bio swales?
I'm sorry, mine isn't numbered.
Okay, so let's see.
What's the account number, please?
Under parks and beautification.
Okay.
103620, and then it's 53510.
Landscape?
It's a restoration, I was hoping that was a one-time cost, no, $10,000.
So 53510 is landscape planting, so that's what you're looking at?
Right, and so annuals, perennials, I understand 8,500. Uh, but the Capitol Drive bed restorations, would that be all the areas with the, the black wrought iron fences?
Um, no, those are, those are green infrastructure items that are technically part of our storm sewer.
Okay, so what would the 10 grand, would that be like west of, west of the Oakleaf Trail Bridge?
Are you looking at a detail sheet or the actual operating budget?
I think the detail.
Detail.
Towards the bottom.
I'm sorry. So.
It's, it would be the last part of your, your section, like the very last page of your thing, of the Department of Public Works.
Oh.
In the scheme of things, it's not big if you.
I can walk over and.
It'd be helpful if these pages had a page number, that, so if someone prints it out.
Yep, no, I found it, I'm just trying to think, so typically that line includes any type of replacement plantings, if, I don't, I don't have any, I'm not recalling this conversation last year, but we, I can certainly.
It's not that big, no worries.
All right, thank you. All right, anything else pertaining to the public works, uh, general fund budget? All right. Fund 9,000, other financing sources and uses? All right, moving on to library fund, 200. The library director is here, if you have any questions? All right, hearing none, I will say, do we have a new, uh, public works, uh, staff member here this evening? Sorry, I meant to, um, you want to come up and introduce yourself?
I'm Conrad, um, I started about a week ago, last Monday, um, and I'm the new utility superintendent for the DPW. And I previously worked at Strand.
We're hiring one away.
Welcome.
Yep.
Welcome.
Heard so many good things about Conrad over the years.
Conrad.
Guys for getting a good one.
Conrad was the secret sauce down in the CC.
Yeah. Great hire, great hire.
Thank you, welcome. Okay, library, um, sounds like there are no points of discussion on the library, which is a way of saying thank you. All right, moving on to senior services fund, 210. The director is here, if you have any questions? All right, hearing none, that's another way of saying thank you. So I should say, it goes without saying, we appreciate all the departments and all the department heads being here, I'm sorry I didn't take the time to say that at the beginning. All right, Shorewood Today Fund?
Are we in the second year of a three-year contract on this? I think, I just, again, getting back to the website and communication with residents and the PAFR. You know, going forward, I just wonder if we need to speak with our partners and figure out, is this the best way to communicate what we need to do? If some money go to a, you know, not the glossy publication, it'd be nice, again, if advertising would support it all, I guess that to me would be the goal. Uh, it's certainly a worthwhile project, but I wonder in this format, once we get past the three-year contract, if there might be a time to touch base with our partners, and I believe we have two marketing committees. Things have changed so much in regard to, um, communication.
Thank you.
I guess it could be a 2027 initiative.
Thank you.
I'm just gonna also say that I really appreciate Shorewood Today and, and what it brings to the community, I think there's a lot of folks in our community that don't necessarily go on the internet, and the fact that this goes into every household is a phenomenal opportunity for all the stakeholders to spread the word of everything going on in Shorewood. So I think for the, you know, the minimal cost that we put into this, it's a very, very powerful tool for our community, and, uh, they do such a great job, too, compared to a lot of the other magazines, so it's good to see print still alive here in Shorewood.
Thank you. Debt service fund, fund 300.
Would our, I just have a question about the streetlight funding with, I noticed the, the refunds for the streetlight fees in the, in their financials. Will that have any effect? I guess that's a debt service, so this is debt service and that's more of a cash flow, I'm just wondering when we'll find out. My question is about, where is the money come, coming from for all those refunds? And I guess going forward for debt service for next year, if the streetlight fee is, is the same, but we're decree, if we go, we're going to consider changing the funding model for the corner lots? Would this number change then, if that, if that is implemented? Cause this number would, I mean, the revenue coming in would go down, or would we raise the whole linear rate to make up for the difference?
The, the, if you're talking about change, how, how the property owners are charged, is that the question?
Yeah, would that affect?
The net revenue would not change, it would just be allocated to the other property owners.
So the linear fee, fee would change to make up the difference?
Yes, correct.
Yes.
And that'll be coming to us on a future agenda, so we'll have a, a more thorough policy discussion.
Okay, thank you.
All right, general capital funds, general capital projects, fund 400. Should we take the barricade proposal now?
Um, I did have a question about state transportation age, did that, for accounting reasons, did that move somewhere else? In which case we could, would we, would it be fair to just remove that? And there's a yellow box there that I'm assuming has no meaning for me.
Don't, don't pay attention to any of the boxes or the colors or anything like that.
The, what was the question?
State transportation age?
State transportation age is recognized to the DPW.
Okay.
Fund, I'm sorry, department.
Okay. And then I saw building improvements under, um, police, but there's nothing on the line. Is that where the steps would go, or is that under another budget? Cause I don't see anything on this page, maybe it's on a different page?
I'm sure, I know the steps are done, so.
I know they look good, but if they're not, we need to redo them again.
I think we had a response to, about steps.
Regarding to building improvements for the police department, that's where it would go. There, I don't believe there was anything budgeted for that, so.
Okay.
Can I, is this appropriate to ask where this, how the steps got fixed and how much that cost? Cause I remember it was a pretty outrageous number at one point, and we, you know, but now it's.
We fixed them.
You just fixed them.
Yeah, we essentially put a Band-Aid on it.
Okay.
Plus us, I don't know, 200 bucks.
Great, and?
But it is temporary.
Oh, how temporary?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Based on the guy that's done concrete for 30 years, he said at most two years, so it bought us time to discuss how ADA compliance would be if we wanted to totally redo the front end of it.
Okay.
I mean, that, that beats the 60,000.
Beats the 60,000.
Yeah.
For now. Yeah.
Yeah.
It defers it.
Yeah, there's a lot of other concrete issues there, but at least the steps are.
That's fantastic, okay, I appreciate that, thank you.
Chief Worth?
Yeah, I just want to reiterate what Lian said, it is just a temporary fix, uh, based on the quote that was obtained, there are still ADA and accessibility issues for the sidewalk, the grading of that, and then the front entrance, that will have to be addressed at some point.
Thank you. So it sounds like it's going to be a 2027 discussion. Okay.
Is this where we discuss the vehicles, um, the, the Jeep and the squad?
Sure.
I don't, the line, I think that's the 150?
150,000.
Yeah, it's 150,000. And I, um, just for the purpose of the capital conversation, uh, in the packet, at the very beginning of the packet, there is a updated, uh, capital fund. It is on page of the packet.
Is it in the memo?
It's in the very beginning of the packet, on, if you look at page five of the packet.
Got it.
So the there, okay, so there's some pretty substantial changes to the police vehicles? They're pretty significant, yes. What are, we've gone from 150,000 to 90,000, so what are the changes? Yes, correct. Can you describe for me the changes, please? Well, the, the.
What, what line are we on?
This is, we're looking at page five of the packet, this would be expenditures, public safety, the police, the $90,000 proposed budget.
Under vehicles?
Under vehicles, coming from 150 in the original packet, so I'm just wondering the $50,000 difference, or $60,000 difference.
Okay, gotcha, following.
So the original capital request was to replace one squad and one, and to, and to, uh, replace the parking checker CSO vehicle.
Yep.
The squad has been removed, and right now we're just asking for the parking checker vehicle as an additional, uh, vehicle. At this point in time, the reason we're asking now is Stellantis, who builds the Jeep Wrangler, is, they make a right-hand drive vehicle, which for parking checkers is essential. It's hit or miss when they release them, they, last time they released them was 2020, uh, they released them in. Uh, they released them in May of twenty five, and then they were concerned that nobody, no municipalities were buying them until they were informed how the budgeting process works. So they're anticipating uh, having them again in twenty six, so that's why we're looking to have the vehicle in twenty six.
Could I ask Captain some questions?
Mm-hmm.
So, the Jeep that we have now, right-hand vehicle, I've seen Jackie drive it all over the village, um. Are we, do we chalk vehicles?
No, we can't chalk. We don't specifically chalk vehicles, we have their GPS and their timestamp with a photo.
Okay.
That way we're not actually.
And that's the system that you're with the twenty-nine thousand dollar system?
No, yes, that's.
Okay.
So our AIM parking system is what is, was what controls night parking and all the permits and everything else. Surprisingly, to get the cameras in the new Jeep, it was twenty-eight thousand dollars, which tracked even me the cost of it.
Sure.
Um, the addition, the reason for the additional um, vehicle is our intention, intention is to keep the old vehicle in the event that the board does eventually approve parking meters, possibly in the future. That would, that would require the purchase of another vehicle to have, we'd have to have two vehicles for, uh, for the parking meters. So we're sort of just keeping the old one in service to avoid potential larger expenses down the road, or in the event that we can't buy that type of vehicle down the road.
So the reason I ask about chalking, I mean, I, I've seen. I've seen the, I, she's fantastic, the parking truck that we have, has been immensely helpful. But I have yet to see her issue a ticket while remaining in the vehicle, she's gotten out, I've ever seen. So I'm wondering. Is it right-handed, the difference in cost between a right-handed vehicle and a left-handed vehicle is about forty thousand dollars?
No, it's essentially the same price, it's about forty-seven thousand dollars-ish for a Wrangler.
But the, but the request here, initially the request here is seventy-five.
Correct, until I found out what the cost of the camera system and the AIM system, computer system was to add it to the Jeep.
So the seventy-five includes the camera system?
No, it does not. It was seventy-five before the addition of the camera system.
Right.
Cause we originally were gonna strip it out of the old Jeep and just transfer it over.
Okay.
Rather than, and now that, looking at the expense down the road, now, now only do you have to buy the Jeep, we still have to outfit it with all the lights, the mounting systems, a new computer, a new computer's just roughly about twenty-seven hundred dollars. Uh, for a laptop to be put in the vehicle, plus we have to put in new cradle points and all the other access points that we have in the vehicle. So it's not just the cost of a vehicle, upfitting of, the outfitting of a vehicle typically runs anywhere from ten to twenty thousand dollars.
Okay. In what years, the current vehicle that we have is?
Twenty seventeen.
JK models, so it's one of the last JK models.
Right.
So what's the hours or the mileage on it?
It's, I just sent it, it's.
It's not even ten years old. But we're doing this because we're afraid we won't be able to get one.
Eighty-six thousand miles on it, plus the, all the idling hours as well. It, it is a constant source of repair as well, being a Jeep, that's normal. But it also generates over four hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year in parking revenue. And when that vehicle's down for repair, you're losing out on revenue.
I mean, I. I just want to make sure I understand the numbers, and I apologize if I'm having a night. The, the cost of the vehicle is about forty-five?
We're guessing forty-seven, Stellantis has not released the pricing yet for the vehicles.
Okay, and then it's another, what, ten to twenty on top of that?
Right.
Outfit it, we'll say twenty. And then another thirty on top of that, for the new, that equipment that you discussed, that can read plates.
Right.
Really.
Our regular squads run about seventy-five thousand.
Before you put anything on?
No, that's completely outfitted seventy-five.
So this is more?
Right, because of the camera system.
Don't the, don't the squads have the license plate readers?
Yes, but those will not work with the AIM system.
And if we, I believe the Ames contract is up in twenty-seven. That twenty-seven, cause I remember talking.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six. If we choose a different system. Obviously you wouldn't, you wouldn't put in the system in this one until you knew what we were gonna go with, right? If, I don't know if there are no other options, is it Ames or Ames, or? I mean, I wouldn't want to spend the money outfitting it with Ames for twenty or thirty grand if, if we decide to go.
There are, there are other options, but right now we have not determined if we're gonna even actually have another RFP to review other, I mean, that'll be something for the board to look, obviously, decide.
Perhaps my last question. How many, how many weeks was, has the vehicle, the, the twenty seventeen JK been down this year?
Two to three.
Two to three weeks?
Mm-hmm, yeah, between getting parts, doing it, as.
Are we doing it in-house?
Yeah, we only have one mechanic, so it's doing it with one person. Depending on what app. Just take two to get.
Okay.
Any idea of loss of revenue in those two, three weeks? Guess.
Probably depends on if the beach is open.
Yeah, I mean.
It's a good number to know.
Yeah, I understand.
So Jackie, the majority of your, of the revenue is, is done by Amber, who does the night parking violations. So when she's not out, she's not actually able to write any citations because it's, the plates are read by the Jeep. So even if, like, we can't have officers go out with parking books and write night parking tickets at all, because we have no idea who has permits, who doesn't have permits, it's all controlled by that system in that vehicle.
Sure. Seems like a crucial, uh, vehicle to have in operation in the village.
So, yeah, so this is really good, um, discussion, uh, discernment. Is there any type of proposal from um, any of the trustees?
Well, it should be on the list, right?
I don't know, I haven't heard that yet, so.
Yeah, I'd like to put it on them. Man, it's just a very expensive vehicle that, you know, doesn't sound like we absolutely need right now. Depending on what we park in on Oakland Avenue in the future, recognizing they're not necessarily built every. So I think requires further discussion as it, I mean, it's the same cost as. But it only has one font.
I'd also like to, to understand a little bit more, and, and I know this is more holistic conversation, but, uh, if they make an electric version or a hybrid version, it'd be great to have a car like that, that's just going around the community circles, uh, to, to be more sort of, you know, have a more sus, sort of sustainable energy source like a hybrid, so I'd love to, I don't know if they make those, uh, Jeeps, those types of Jeeps with a hybrid?
In the right-hand drive, we have not seen that.
Okay.
So it's typically just the, the standard gas engine.
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, I think the real question would be right-hand drive versus left-hand. Um, right-hand drive being more expensive and produced in fewer quantities in fewer years, so.
Yeah, right.
You know, maybe discussing, do we need a right-hand versus?
Like I said, the last time they were available for municipal government purchase was twenty twenty.
So we could miss a window, and then twenty thirty could be the next time we could pick up on it, we could buy one of those potentially.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
If we decide we.
Right.
And the other option you have to look at is while for that vehicle, it would be good to have a spare, which would be the older Jeep. If this is involved in an accident in some form, you are looking at months then of potential downtime.
Hundred percent.
And then you won't have your parking revenue.
I'm on board.
Understood.
Chief?
Yeah, just a point that I want to clarify as well, um, and I understand that you've seen Jackie out of the car on multiple occasions. When she does that, there's a handheld device that she actually issues the tickets from after she runs the plates. Amber predominantly stays in the car, which increases efficiency because she's responsible for night parking.
Okay.
So as the right-hand, she's able to just issue the citation and issue it right from the right-hand side, so.
Okay.
It just creates efficiencies having that vehicle.
No, I appreciate that, thank you, chief. Thank you, Captain.
Um, yeah, I, I appreciate all the clarification, I think it's, um, I put it on the list. Um, it also goes into operations too, for the entire parking program, so, um, I'm just not sure how to organize that discussion so that everybody has enough information, but we will touch on it at the end of this meeting and then, um, make a plan for moving forward.
So going full circle, the item in here for a hundred and fifty thousand is actually around ninety thousand, is that the correct number? This, okay, thanks.
That's my understanding. And, um, as far as taking the squad, the request for a squad replacement out of the budget, I'm assuming it's just to um, it was a request to contain the overall capital budget for the organization?
Yes, it was a consideration to remove in light of budget.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
We appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you, chief.
All right, do we talk about barricades? This is a kind of, I want to hear more about this proposal.
Are there specific questions related to the barricades?
I'd like to hear from trustee Stokebrand what it is that is being requested. So it's, uh, question seven, page three of our question and answer document. And trustee Stokebrand, am I interpreting this correctly?
Yeah, I guess, um. It's important, I think we have talked about before when we shortened the, the Fourth of July parade route. Um, how there was an attitude among many of us that we would like to see it brought back, because that part of the village is very important to us. It's got our lowest income census group and, um, but we also want a safe parade. So we want to make sure we have the staffing and the equipment to go back to the route that we had after North Oakland Avenue is redone. And if, if the best way to do that is with what I, in my view seems to be old technology, you know, the forty thousand dollar, um, these seem to be things that we've used before, I just, you know, when, I don't have that. You had went, you had gone to various different municipalities and found, gotten feedback from them. It just occurred to me, why don't we have some of that new technology barricades? I believe during the Criterion this year, there was a high-speed chase that was stopped. And I just, I think about the Feast and the Criterion, and I just, I'd like to know, now that we're looking at the budget. Is there a reason we should invest, maybe not a quarter of a million dollars, but is there a reason that we should not be investing in some of the modern barricade technology?
I mean, ultimately, that's a board decision about whether or not you determine to add that, um, as I mentioned earlier, the forty thousand dollars that, that was referenced in the Q and A was the purchase of additional sixty-four class-three barriers, twenty Jersey barriers, some closed-ahead signs, road-close signs, uh, digital message board, as well as the consideration, um, less than a thousand dollars of hiring private security. Based on the modular barricade, uh, quote that we received for forty-eight modular barricades, including a trailer to, um, hold and deploy all of those modular barricades, was about two hundred and sixty thousand dollars, give or take. That's only for the closure, based on the, the estimates that we would need. That number is strictly for the closure of Oakland Avenue and doesn't include the closure of crossing Capitol.
So could you, could you do a hybrid? Like, instead of just all the forty thousand dollars of the traditional equipment? I mean, forty-eight modular barricades, is there, would we want to do a hybrid of some? The, the, you said it's just to close Oakland, so that's for all the east-west?
North, south, east, west on Oakland, not including closure of Capitol.
Does that include the use of any public works vehicles? And how much would that bring the price down?
I don't know.
See, that, that's the kind of collaboration that we need to figure out.
I, no.
Public work vehicles during that requires Class B CDLs, we only have three people monitor the entire parade route. You're talking about taking out.
Three CBLs. I think we're getting a little out of scope.
But like, to do it at what would be required at those intersections, a dozen trucks, maybe more.
Well, that's what I was looking for, a hybrid approach.
Right.
Point of order, I think this is getting out of scope of the capital budget discussion. I think if trustee Stokebrand, if you'd like to make a proposal to add something to the capital budget, um, I would entertain that now. Uh, trustee Arndreffer?
No, I have nothing to add. I mean, I have a word of clarification, I mean, this is for twenty-six.
Yeah, for twenty, twenty-seven. But instead of trying to absorb the whole forty thousand dollars in one budget year?
I'm, I'm not supportive of putting money into this, this budget, I guess would be my.
Well, we're talking about remove, not getting another police car in favor of barricades for a parade, I'm, I'm not, I can't entertain that.
I mean, we haven't made a final decision on the, I mean, we have. It's kind of in the cart before the horse.
Yeah, the decision point.
Barricade.
Decision point's next year, not now. Or later on down the line.
So, um, trustee Kudo, did you get your answer, your question answered?
Nope, I'm ready to move on.
Okay.
Again, I think this is something we have to tackle in the next budget.
Okay.
You know, given what we're looking at in twenty-six, I understand the, the hope to take a piece of this now. But I don't have enough information to know what pieces we need to just take, um, so I would prefer to wait till. Couldn't talk about it for twenty.
Okay.
But I.
All right.
Generally agree, I think I'm on the record with trustee Stokebrand, I would like to parade.
Understood. All right, so with that, we'll close that, um, discussion on that item. Uh, yes, trustee.
I'd like to put the neighborhood greenways initiative on the list.
On the list.
I mean, I'm, I'm supportive of the work, I just think that that seems discretionary at this point, based on what we're thinking at.
And that's in Capitol?
Yep.
Okay. Um, any, yes?
I just had a question about the first item under Public Works on packet page fifty. Uh, we're looking at getting a new Public Works facility, and I'm wondering about the seventy-five thousand dollars for furniture and equipment. Yeah, it's, um, four hundred, thirty-one hundred, five, six, one, three, zero, DPW equipment, furniture, seventy-five.
I see thirteen.
I see seventy-five.
Are we on page fifty?
Yeah, page fifty, first line item on Public Works.
Just remember that, 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 the budget that you're looking at has been superseded by the, by the, um, page fi, I think it starts at page five.
Okay.
Okay, so with that, I'm looking at and can we just make sure, I'm, I'm looking at thirteen thousand dollars for DPW equipment slash furniture. Public Works Administration, Public Works under page five that you just referenced. Yeah, that's for the blade, the plow blade.
Oh, the snowplow about the replacement, the extra, snowplow blade, right?
Yeah.
I, I'm sorry, could we just pull this back, what are we talking about?
Explain to, to the, the folks what that's for, please?
So we have a couple new trucks with new plow mounts on the front of them. I don't have a backup blade in case one gets destroyed during a snow operation, so that truck gets taken out of service. So in order to keep up with snow operations, I need a backup blade. We have a whole bunch of old ones, but I can't use them anymore because I'm starting to run old trucks.
And that blade is thirteen thousand.
An eleven-foot plow blade is thirteen thousand dollars.
But can I, can I ask you a question about the next line?
Sure.
What page are you on?
I'm on, still on page five, the amended page five. 360,000 is that hybrid of the 290 and the 70,000 in the old budget? It'd be 290 for a plow truck.
Yeah, it was 290 for a plow truck.
And 70 for a pickup, I imagine?
For Truck 24, yeah. So added those together, gets you the 360.
What's the, pretty, pretty tight around these parts? So the 290, can you walk me through?
Yeah, so 290 is a 10-foot truck, dump truck, single axle.
Okay.
Big regular plow truck, 13 grand for a snowplow. It would also come with that truck. B-box salter that would also come with that, plus all the controls that go with that. Just the chassis alone is about 180,000.
Okay.
Body after that. So then the body, the dump body has to get built on that. So you just don't buy the dump truck.
Sure.
You buy chassis, dump trucks, another modular, $80,000 that has to get handmade.
Yeah.
And then everything else that gets attached to that, hydraulic plumbing, lights.
Is this a backup vehicle or what?
Nope, it would be a frontline one. So to replace Truck 59.
And what's the age?
2008.
And condition?
Not great.
Plus, can you elaborate on not great?
Uh, I.
Was it down a lot? I mean,
Yes, so two years ago, I had to spend $30,000 just to fix the emissions-related issues with that truck. Just to get it to where I can drive it down the road.
Hasn't been down this year?
No, well, it hasn't been used since January.
Okay, so it's just for plow operations?
Yep, that one's just strictly plowing.
And the new one would be?
Strictly plowing. But we take the, so we can take the salters out of them. I leave them in there during the year unless we need the trucks. So like when we had all this flooding, we had to take all of that stuff. All those salters came out, we used them. So they're also backup dump trucks for water main breaks, everything else that happens throughout the summer.
Okay. And the 70,000 is a?
Truck 24, that's a 2008 Chevy Colorado that's used for building maintenance. The engine blew up in that one and.
And you need that engine?
I do. And it just so happens that a five-cylinder GM engine with 100,000 miles costs me five grand, which is worth more than what the truck is.
Five cylinder?
Yeah, it's a five cylinder. Those are straight fives.
Okay, um, I'm, I'm fine with this. I mean, I'm not, I don't love the 70K, but I, I would like to discuss the 290 for the new dump truck. I'd like to add that.
290,000 for the dump truck replacement?
Recognizing that the 13,000 for the blade is sort of non-negotiable if, if it doesn't fit, then it doesn't fit.
Right. And the thing is, though, is that also the 290 includes another blade. Because that truck is leaving, so I have to get a blade for that truck and then the 13,000 separate from that to get an extra.
So 13,000's on top of the 290, the 290 comes with a truck and a blade?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
And that was Truck 24?
59.
It's replacing Truck 59.
Okay. Thank you. All right, at this time, yeah, Trustee McGovern.
One last question on Capital Products Fund. There's a item under revenue, 3.7 million and transfers from TIP number five. It's the, it's page 50 in the packet that we've been on. It's a transfer from TIP number five, 3.7 million in revenue. Is that just, is that for, going to be used for reconstruction of North Oakland or is that for paying off debt from?
No, that's, that's 100% for North Oakland project.
Okay. And is that the full balance of TIP number five that we have now?
I don't think that's the full balance. That's only what we're, what's needed to fund the project.
Okay.
Which, thank you to five. All right, so, yes?
Just as a separate item, I mean, how essential are those building improvement items? I mean, appointing mason repair means that essential work or?
Yes.
Okay.
So between the police station that has water leaking into it because of the front facade.
Yeah.
We haven't done any mason repairs to that building in the past two years. They desperately need it.
Okay.
I will not be doing any mason repairs to the DPW building, given the discussions that we're having, but most of those mason repairs are for this building, library and the police station.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee Warren?
I just took a quick process question here. I noticed we pulled out several things and you have a rather significant list that we need to talk about. I'm assuming we're going to map that out, bring it back and have a holistic discussion as opposed to trying to get through it in 12, 12 minutes.
What I would like to do is close discussion on the general budget and I would like to say, acknowledge where we are with the list and initiatives. And do a temperature read to make sure that we all support getting more information and coming back and also clarifying at what meeting that would occur at. Okay, so where we are at is we had a discussion of reference to website improvement, which would be a 2027 initiative, a reference to potential hiring freeze, which there is no interest in pursuing.
I think that was not a target, not a blanket, is my understanding, but you could, it was not a, nobody is in favor of a blanket hiring.
Yes, and there's also no interest in holding on replacement of the assistant village manager position. So at this time, there are no proposals to eliminate positions, hold position, any vacancies open, et cetera. Alternatives to Microsoft, that would be a 2027 initiative. Revisit the Shorewood Today Initiative at the end of contract, which would probably be 2027 at the earliest. A desire to discuss replacement of the Jeep, right-handed Jeep for parking. A discussion of perhaps eliminating the neighborhood initiative, Greenway, Greenway initiative from the Capitol budget. And a wish to discuss further replacement of Truck 59.
Um, two that I have that I just wanted clarification from the board. We had also allocation between 10 to 15,000 for a CAFR report. And then just wanted to follow up with clarification on the groins at Atwater Study for 15,000.
Did you wish to add the groins? No.
That was not my baby.
Okay.
It's just a general question. I don't, it doesn't need to be owned by anyone.
I was not in favor.
Yeah, I mean, I think we were in favor of that, of the inclusion and it fell off, is my recollection.
There, um, there were four wanting to see it go through and be discussed further in the budget process, but there wasn't a formal commitment on the board to take it on as an initiative. It was pending budget approval. Because if it wasn't funded, then it would be deferred to a future year.
So interest in, so thank you for bringing that to our attention. Is there interest in adding it to the budget?
I would be interested in that, yes.
So other support for adding?
I'm, I'm, I'm happy to add it to the list and talk about it at this meeting where we're talking about everything else, but I feel like now it's kind of rushed. I don't just want to start throwing stuff in the budget.
I think there's a big picture here and it's hard to.
But yeah, I would like to include it among.
Okay. Um, so which meeting would we come back to these items?
So you would meet next Monday.
Did you say next Monday?
Next Monday. Um, and then you'd make final decisions and then those decisions would be updated within the course of the budget and then we would proceed with publication.
I did have a question. I, I don't want to interrupt. Sidewalks? So I saw, do we have sidewalks in the final, let me go back to page five. Is there some money for sidewalks? Was it 40 grand or, I mean, I just?
Yes, there's 40 grand and it would be borrowed.
It would be borrowed, okay. Thank you.
So, um, so the lit, we will convene on Monday, October 13th. It is possible that that will conflict with a Brewers game. So if we're able to negotiate the time, perhaps that would be amenable to the group.
Six, six o'clock? Is that, I, I don't know.
Are we going to have?
Oh, I, can I also add Emerald Ash Borer?
One game at a time.
I would like to add Emerald Ash Borer. Uh, you know, it's down for 40,000. Could we do 20? Extend that program one more year?
Okay, so we're adding.
And also the parks, the refuse containers and liners.
What about them?
Put on the list, please.
To discuss whether to remove them?
Right. Thank you.
Did you get that, manager? All right, so we will convene at 6:00 PM on October 13th. And we're going to take it one baseball game at a time and then, is there a motion to adjourn? Oh, I also, before we adjourn, I would just like to say officially, thank you to all the department heads and, and the staff who work so hard to run your departments as efficiently as possible, steward the resources that we have with responsibility and great care. And bringing this forward for us to consider in 2025. It would be remiss to not take this opportunity to do so. So with that, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
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 We are adjourned at 7:26 PM. Uh, we will convene the Village Board Business Meeting at. All right, thank you, everyone. Um, I'd like to convene the Board of the Village of Shorewood at 7:39. I apologize for the delay. It's some procedural business to take care of. Uh, has this meeting been properly noticed?
The meeting has been properly noticed and posted according to law.
Thank you. All trustees are present. Um, thank you, everyone, for being here. Thank you for your time, talent and patience in advance. We are going to take things out of order this, this evening. We have a proclamation for pedestrian safety, which normally we have proclamations at the end of the meeting. Um, and I would like to offer this proclamation at the beginning of the meeting. It reads, whereas safe, accessible streets are essential for the well-being of all residents, including children, older adults and people with disabilities. And whereas thousands of Wisconsinites, including over 100,000 with vision loss, rely on sidewalks, curb ramps, accessible pedestrian signals, white canes and service animals to navigate public spaces safely. And whereas the Wisconsin's white cane law requires drivers to stop at least 10 feet from pedestrians using a white cane or service animal, reinforcing the need for driver awareness and pedestrian respect. And whereas communities can reduce injuries and save lives by investing in proven pedestrian safety infrastructure, such as high-visibility crosswalks, traffic calming and accessible design. And whereas raising awareness of pedestrian rights and responsibilities promotes a culture of safety and inclusion for all road users. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Village President Anne McCague, on behalf of the residents of the Village of Shorewood, do hereby proclaim October as Pedestrian Safety Month and October 15th, 2025, as White Cane Safety Day in the Village of Shorewood and call on all residents, leaders and lawmakers to prioritize safe, accessible streets year round. Excellent. We have a framed copy of the proclamation. Would you like to take it with you this evening or have us deliver it to you? Okay, I'll walk it over.
The photo or is that not?
Of course, we can do a photo.
I can. Let me use you.
I can do it. Do you even know anything about photography? Pretty hard, like, I'm like here in the car and I could just. Don't aim at you, buddy. Okay, just relax.
It's right in the alley, right here.
Hey, is Jake Brissette here? We have a proclamation for him as well, but we'll hold that one till the end.
All right, thank you, everyone. Um, I gotta admit, I am all sixes and sevens with my screens here. So we are, what's next on our agenda, please?
We're going to call the roll. Just because we.
Oh, okay.
Hi, I am Talia. I am the Electra's and Licensing Clerk, helping with the meeting while Sawyer is absent today. I will go ahead with the road call. Trustee McGovern?
Here.
Trustee Stokebrand?
Aye.
Trustee Arndreffer?
Aye.
Trustee Kudo?
Here.
Trustee Warren?
Aye.
Trustee Arne?
Here.
Everyone's present. Thank you very much. All right, um, and what is next? Do we have any special orders of business?
We do. The first special order of business is to consider NSFD resolution recommending single or multi-year capital budget for 2026, 2030. And then Robert, if you could just stay at the podium because you also have the next two items.
Sounds like a plan.
Sounds good.
And by then I'll probably have my agenda up.
So the first resolution here is to consider adoption of a single or multi-year capital budget for the fire department. Multi, capital budgets are separate from our operating budget. Uh, so it requires separate action by the seven municipal boards or councils. Uh, this is a, a budget that's updated every year. It's a rolling five years. So last year, the board, your board and the other six municipal boards adopted the budget for 2025 to 2029. This is for 2026 to 2030. The, uh, this was new that we've gone out this far as of a couple of years ago because it coincides with some of the lead times to get our vehicles. Uh, in the last four years, we've gone from lead times to get most of our vehicles of about one year to four years. There's a significant lead time, but there's also been significant cost increases industry-wide that is not vendor-specific. So the cost increases have also gone up and that's reflective in an increase in the year 2026 and 2027. Over 2025, in 2023, the Fire Department Board did a analysis of uh, this increase and looked at several options that included not only paying basically cash, but leasing. Uh, the option that increased the amount of this budget resolution for 2026 was the ultimately selected option. The original number for 2026 was 1.2 million. We've been able to reduce that for 2026 to 905,848 by using one-time revenue from Medicare or Medicaid funding from the federal government that we're getting back paid on right now from 2023. So that reduces the number to 905,000. In your packet, I believe it's on page 64 on the bottom, that lays out the municipal contributions by year based on the percentage that each municipality pays in. Now, moving forward, that number moves slightly every year because the percentages that the municipalities pay moves also based on the funding formula that's agreed upon. So this would require all seven municipality board or councils to approve. Uh, and, um, there's a resolution included in the packet for that. So I'd take any questions.
Any questions for Chief Whitaker, Trustee Stokebrand?
Are you having some success doing leasing or using refurbished or used vehicles?
Uh, leasing, we did an analysis and it was not, uh, positive for us. So we're paying cash for these vehicles. Uh, the leasing option was actually costlier when we looked at it. Uh, the refurbished vehicles, we try to, um, we don't, the ambulances, we, we do something like a refurbishment, but it's called a remount. So the ambulances, I think similar to the discussion you had on dump. So the ambulances, I think similar to the discussion you had on dump trucks earlier, there's a chassis on the front, that's the truck, the truck part that they drive. The back end is a box that basically is the patient compartment. We used to buy new everything, and we've transitioned to buying new chassis, but we're using the box that they put on the back. And it goes through some cleanup. All the bolts and screws are replaced, so they don't rattle when you go down the road. And that's done after, it's about a seven to ten-year window, depending on the ambulance and the mileage it has on it.
Because it looks like you replace every ten years, so then you get an extra seven onto that?
No, at, at ten years, we were, we do this, this re-chassis. We used to buy new at ten years. So now we re-chassis at ten years. So it reduces the cost. I think it's ninety thousand dollars. It's, it's some savings. It's not as significant as I originally thought it would be, but it does provide some savings.
Trustee Warren?
Maybe this is an unanswerable question, but these, these increases are pretty high-popping. I'm wondering if you see kind of them abating at any point in the future years? Are we gonna be having this conversation? You know, every year where these, we're, we're seeing these huge cost increases of equipment?
Yeah, the, over the last two years, they've leveled out. It's not anything to save. To say that it's better, there is currently a class-action suit that was filed by the City of La Crosse on behalf of other municipalities against, I think it's three of the larger manufacturers that basically have been, all these companies have been bought up by larger private equity firms. And there's currently a class-action suit. A couple of weeks ago, there was a hearing at the U S Senate on the impact of these increases. There's a lot of soundbites that came out of that hearing. I can't tell you that anything came of it. But the class-action suit is proceeding. And I don't, I don't really know what the chances of that are. It's basically a collusion suit.
Thank you for the background.
We might want to have the chief come, maybe in the spring or something, to talk about some of these themes that have been coming up at the board.
Yeah.
All right, is there a motion? Yes, Trustee Stokbrand?
I move to approve Resolution twenty twenty-five twelve, a resolution approving a single or multi-year capital budget to purchase large apparatus equipment from twenty twenty-six to twenty thirty.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Stokbrand, seconded by Trustee Warren. Any discussion? Hearing none, this will be a roll call vote?
Trustee McGovern?
Aye.
Trustee Kudo?
Aye.
Trustee Warren?
Aye.
Trustee Strugman?
Aye.
Trustee Arndorfer?
Aye.
Trustee Arne?
Oh, you can make a note that Trustee Ursink stepped out. And President McCaig votes yes. So motion carries. Moving on to four B, Consider North Shore Fire Department Resolution Recommending Twenty Twenty-Five North Shore Fire Department Fee Schedule. This is another necessary step that we have to take before the budget can be adopted in November.
Correct. So this, our fee schedule is similar to your municipal fee schedule. It has to be approved by the governing bodies. For our purposes, five of the seven municipal governing bodies have to approve our fee schedule. So this is, we do this normally with budget to give us enough time to get through all the municipal meetings. The fee schedule has three parts, one fees for emergency services, two inspections, and then there's three administrative fees, which is like open records requests and some rental fees for different things we have that community groups use, and then usually to offset their costs. That's like training CPR in the school districts and things like that. The biggest change here is the emergency service fees specific to ambulance transport. There's a lot of moving parts here, so I'm gonna try to be succinct, but cover them fully, and I'd be more than happy to take questions. So we, there's a shift in the industry to move from what they call itemized billing to bundled billing. And itemized billing is, there's a, there's a, you're paying for each piece, so you're gonna pay for the transport, then you're gonna pay for, if you have an E K G done, or if you have oxygen put on you, and that adds up to a number. The industry has transitioned. We haven't moved there yet, but to what's just basically one cost, so it's one item on a bill that you get. And the reason they've moved there is two-part. One is it's easier not only on the field provider, because they have to, in a fast-moving environment, keep track of everything that's getting used. It's just challenging. Two, on the back end, the billing companies prefer to do this and actually will do our work cheaper. We pay a commission to them, so they'll actually look, at times lower your cost to what they pay, because it's easier for them to process that bill. And three, the industry has found that Medicare and Medicaid reject less claims on the first pass-through if you're a bundled bill than if you're a itemized bill, which reduces the workload back to the, on our end to go back and clean up claims and things like that. So there's that moving part. So our one part of the proposal is move from itemized billing to bundled billing. The second part is to look at cost. We did a market analysis of where we were at. We found we were under the market for what other communities were charging. So there's an adjustment there. And then part three is we did a study of what it actually costs to provide the service using a methodology that's supported by federal government for data we have to submit to them to do cost analysis, because a significant, I think it's over fifty-five percent of our payer, is federal money, Medicare and Medicaid. So we have to submit a study of what it costs to do this, to provide the service. The cost to provide the service on average was nineteen hundred dollars per ambulance transport. We were billing in the range of nine hundred and twenty-four to one thousand three hundred and seventy-two with an additional between three hundred and five hundred dollars for supplies. So on page sixty-seven of your packet, there's two charts. One, the top chart lays out the base charge that we were charging in twenty twenty-five, and then what the averages of the cost, once they added on the, the supplies, sort of the small, the E K G, the oxygen, the mileage, and things like that. So you'll see the average. The next chart on there shows you what other area communities that have moved to bundled billing are charging, and the rates that they are charging. And then we looked at what that cost to provide the service was, and came to a suggested rate that's on the bottom of page sixty-eight. That is included in the fee schedule. So there's rates for B L S means basic life support. That's non-life-threatening injuries. A L S means advanced life support or paramedic-level service. So there's resident rate and non-resident rates. They both have an offset of, they have an offset somewhere in the range of two to three hundred dollars for resident, non-resident. And so that is the first part of the, that's the big change here from prior years that you've seen. So I see if there's any questions before I move on to the next portion.
Any questions for the chief?
Okay, second part is fire prevention permits and inspections. We, those increased three percent to match our municipal C P I change that's in our budget. And the final part is the administrative fees. There's no change to those other than one, we rent CPR mannequins to primarily the school districts who have to teach their staff CPR, and we have disposable costs once they return them. So it's just basically a cost recovery. So any questions?
Trustee Warren?
Can you make a motion?
Thank you.
I move to approve Resolution number twenty twenty-five thirteen. Resolution approving the twenty twenty-six North Shore Fire Department Fees or Service Schedule.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Warren, seconded by Trustee Arndorfer. Any discussion? I just want to say thank you to the chief for taking all these opportunities to make things as efficient and economical as possible for this consolidated department.
Thank you. One more to go yet.
All right. No further discussion. This will be a roll call vote also.
Trustee Ursink?
Yes.
Trustee Strugman?
Aye.
Trustee Kudo?
Yep.
Trustee McGovern?
Aye.
Trustee Arndorfer?
Aye.
Trustee Warren?
Aye.
And President McCaig, aye. Motion carries. Nine C, uh, no, sorry. Four C, Consider North Shore Fire Department Resolution Recommending Adoption of a Resolution Allowing An Option For a Member Municipality of the North Shore Fire Department An Exception to the Levy Limit for Charges for the North Shore Fire Department Pursuant to the Two Thousand Five Wisconsin Act four eighty-four.
So this is a annual, it's become annual since twenty sixteen, a resolution that each board or council considers adoption. This allows the seven municipalities on their levy limit worksheet to reduce, to deduct the cost increase from the joint fire department. So there's a mathematical calculation that Christina and her staff will do when they fill out the levy limit worksheet. It basically reduces that from your municipal levy limit, which is based on net new growth. The statute says that a joint fire department can increase our costs up to C P I plus two percent in the charge that we send back to the municipality, and you can exempt that increase from your levy limit. So it, it's a, in essence, a benefit for the municipalities for being a member of a joint fire department. If you've watched on the news, there's a lot of talk about Wauwautos and West Alice getting together to do this consolidation. And that's one of the big drivers, is looking to get some relief from levy limits. So this does require that all seven municipal governing bodies pass this, even if you don't use it. Some, most municipalities have been using it the last couple of years, because the limits have been so tight and that new growth is so small. So I'd take any questions on that.
Any questions or a motion? Trustee Stokbrand?
I'll move to approve Resolution twenty twenty-five fourteen. Authorizing, authorizing an exception to the levy limits for charges for the North Shore Fire Department pursuant to Two Thousand Five Wisconsin Act four eight four.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Stokbrand, seconded by Trustee Ursink. Any discussion? Hearing no, hearing none, this will be a roll call vote also.
Trustee Kudo?
Yes.
Trustee McGovern?
Aye.
Trustee Strugman?
Aye.
Trustee Warren?
Aye.
Trustee Ursink?
Aye.
Trustee Arndorfer?
Aye.
Trustee McCaig?
Aye. Uh, Ursink?
Oh, yeah, I was the second. Yeah, sorry. I thought you were asking that second, second. Yeah, sorry, my bad. Yeah, I was the second.
All right, motion carries, and that concludes all of our resolutions for the North Shore Fire Department. Thank you, Chief Whitaker. And also closes special orders of business. Moving on to item five, the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Still moved.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Ursink, seconded by Trustee Warren. Any discussion? Trustee Kudo?
Remove item B. It's a very small amendment.
Okay.
C and D.
All right, four B, Consider Regular Village Board Minutes, September fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. Trustee Kudo?
I just need to amend it. I was not present. And it has me present. That's it.
All right. Then
I'll move to approve the minutes of
I think we take them under item six. That's what I was just looking for. Yeah, so we'll hold on action, but thank you. Five C, Trustee Stokbrand?
Yeah, I was wondering, it talks about needing to go over something because of an inconsistency issue with the code R F P process, so we'll revisit it. I was wondering what the what the issue is.
Well, if you'd like to, I don't want to get out of scope, but.
Sure. So it's essentially, it's old language. We used to have a full-time attorney on staff, and that changed many years ago, so it doesn't account for the fact that we now have an R F P process for evaluating. Specifies that the village president provides a recommendation to the board as opposed to going through the R F P process, and then specifies terms for termination of sixty days, which is something that we would not ordinarily put in the code, but otherwise deal with it within the scope of the contract. So it's just outdated.
So it's just in alignment, but it doesn't provide, it doesn't prevent us from moving forward with issuing a contract or awarding the contract?
Okay, the other thing, I was, I have heard some concerns about when people, residents bring issues before, like the Board of Appeals, and they, the attorney, Cravelo, I think in this case, would represent the village. Then who represents the Board of Appeals? Do you see what I'm saying? I, there were concerns about conflict of interest. So you have the village attorney representing the village and the village staff. But then who represents the Board of Appeals? Would that be, like, would we hire, we haven't done this before. I just, this is a concern that's been brought to me.
So does it pertain to issuing a contract or the scope of the contract?
Well, I wonder if we would have to do a different hiring.
I, I believe that's out of scope for the conversation with regards to the contract, but happy to follow up on that with Cravelo.
Okay.
So yeah, what's before us tonight is a contract in response to an R F P that we issued with a scope of work.
Okay, and then I'm prepared to make a motion, but I'm just, I'm going to insert, this is for twenty twenty-six and twenty twenty-seven, is that correct? So it's in the motion? Because then it says twenty, twenty twenty-eight and twenty thirty to be determined prior to twenty twenty-eight budget. So this is a two-year contract for twenty-six and twenty-seven, is that correct?
The rates in accord with the terms of the contract, the rates are to be revisited in twenty twenty-eight through twenty thirty.
So it is a five-year contract, but the rates are uncertain. I guess I just what was the R F P for, a two-year or a five-year?
Three, with the option to extend for two years.
Oh, so it's for twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight?
Correct.
I move to approve the agreement for village attorney and prosecutor services with Cravelo, Nicholas and Hall, and further recommend ordinance recommendations be provided to the Judiciary, Personnel, and Licensing Committee later this year for consideration. With it noted that the agreement is for twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven, and twenty twenty-eight.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Trustee Stokbrand, seconded by Trustee Ursink. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Oh, I didn't hold it. All right, sorry. Uh, nine D, no, yes. Consider Shorewood Connects Facilitator Contract Twenty Twenty-Six, Twenty Twenty-Eight? Trustee Stokbrand?
Again, I think it's important for the minutes. If someone's reading through this, I'd like to make clear that this is for, it's for three years, twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight, so I would just amend the motion as I, when I read it.
Thank you.
I move to waive the village purchasing policy and authorize the Shorewood Senior Resource Center to enter into a three-year contract for twenty twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight with Foschi Logier to update and facilitate the age-friendly plan.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Stokbrand, seconded by Trustee Ursink. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And then the only other item removed from the consent agenda that we didn't approve would be five B to, so is there a motion to amend the village board meetings from September fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, and approve as amended?
Move to amend and approve.
Second.
Trustee, a motion by Trustee Kudo, seconded by Trustee Stokbrand. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. So that concludes item five as well as item six. For item seven, public hearing, we have a public hearing scheduled for tonight regarding ordinance thirty seventy-six. This was posted based on Plan Commission Action in September, last meeting in September. There's been, so the situation where we're in tonight is that the, it is, sorry, let me start over again. We had to continue with the public hearing as posted. However, the applicant has come forward and said that there's a possibility he may be withdrawing his application. That's why originally he asked for us not to consider action this evening. I had scheduled, I had agendaed possible action this evening, because that's our procedure to have a hearing and action in the same meeting. But now I've understood that there's a possibility that he may withdraw his application. So we have two options this evening. We can hold the public hearing as scheduled. However, what that means is it could be a month before we would take action or take no action, which I feel is confusing for the public. If there are people, the second option is that we can make a motion to defer the public hearing until we hear from the applicant whether he wants to continue forward with the application or the considerate being heard on this matter. If there are people, in that case, if we do that, then if there are people here this evening who wanted to be here, heard on this matter, you could be heard under item eight, Citizens to Be Heard. Those comments would be recorded. Those comments would be recorded and then included in any material that is provided in a public hearing moving forward. So that your time is not wasted. So with that, um, I.
A point of order, though.
Yeah.
How could they, uh, at least those for item?
I would assume that if we defer the matter, that then it is no longer on the agenda and it could be heard, but perhaps that is incorrect. Okay, good point. Thank you, trustee Stokbrand. So that would not be an option.
I'll make a motion to defer.
Okay. Is there a second? Let's see if it's.
I'm just want, I'd be sure that we're. Did I find it deferred? Applicant. Ended or? We're to be.
So the application has not been withdrawn, but there is a possibility. Um, so the applicant is asking us for not to consider action this evening. Um, and in my mind, it doesn't make sense to hold a public hearing. Um, if we may either be not taking action. Or would be taking action up to four weeks, four to five weeks into this future.
So the applicant is here and I think he would like to present, so.
Um, is that, I just spoke to the, is that your preference? We can't, right. So I don't want to have discussion unless this is, this is either a public hearing and we're going to have. Um, oh, if there's a second to the deferral, deferment, now procedurally.
You could have a public hearing postponed.
Right.
And postpone the what?
Consideration. Mm-hmm. And then if the applicant does withdraw his application, then we would not take any action in the future. Otherwise, it would be agendaed as such.
Now withdrawing.
Well. If we're not going to take action tonight, then I don't want it. I'd rather wait.
With trustee Kudo.
So I need a motion to defer.
I'll move to defer.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Um, motion by trustee Kudo, seconded by trustee Warren. Um, any discussion? And just so everybody knows procedurally.
We have people in the room to do this, but we're not.
Correct.
If we, if we approve this.
Right. So if we make a motion to defer the public hearing, then we would not hear anything this evening. Um, and we would schedule, we would reschedule it if the, um. Applicant chooses to move forward with the request to rezone.
I guess I'm.
Yes, please.
I guess I'm hearing that there's some desire to defer this because there's some question as to moving forward. And in my opinion, agreeing with trustee Kudo, I don't think it makes sense. Hold the hearing and then defer the agenda item. I think it makes sense to do them all. That's, that's how I'm going to.
Mm-hmm. Um. And so, um, we can, so basically with discussion on a motion to defer, we can only discuss the, the defer. The deferral or the deferment. Um, so if the applicant wants to explain something about deferring. You can do that, but we can't get into the, um, the item itself or the application or the rezone.
Uh, Patrick Callahan, Callahan, uh, counsel for, uh, the applicant Andrew Burcoles or Skony, um, Skony Solutions. Um, we are requesting a deferral because there have been some developments in terms of a potential, um, potential tenant that would comply with the existing, uh, zoning. Um, and we think it makes sense to give us, uh, and we think we can act on this pretty quickly. Um, and that we should have, uh, you know, no more than 30 days, uh, have an answer and figure out if we're going to move forward with it. And if that's the case, we would want to withdraw the zoning application and we just think as a matter of administrative efficiency. Um, and, um, you know, that that would be the, that would be the best way to proceed. We do apologize for the last minute nature of this. Um, these discussions have transpired within the last few days. Um, but that's, that's the basis for the request for the deferral.
Right. And it was not in, there was no way, the, the hearing had already been publicly noticed. And so that's why we needed to keep it on the agenda as such. We couldn't amend the agenda, um, prior to this. So thank you for providing that information. Uh, any other discussion? All right. Hearing none. Um, all those in favor of deferring, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. So we will not hold a public hearing this evening. Um, a, anyone who was here to, we're sorry for any inconvenience at this time. Um, moving on to item eight, citizens to be heard. This item, item is for matters not on the agenda. Um, is there anybody who would like to be heard on a matter not on the agenda? All right. I'm not seeing anyone, um, on the virtual platform signaling and I'm not seeing anybody approaching the podium. So moving on to new business, um, we will, do we have to make a motion to defer? Okay. So 9A, um, I would like to make a motion to defer consideration of ordinance three, 3076. An ordinance to rezone 4449-53, North Oakland Avenue. Two, three, six, dash, nine, 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 three, dash, zero, 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 from MX1 mixed-use storefront to GX1 general residential office mix.
Second.
Motion by President McKay, seconded by trustee Stokebrand. Any discussion? Um, just to clarify, this would be deferred in the event that there is a public hearing on this matter moving forward. If the applicant withdraws their application for rezoning, then it would not be, um, deferred to a future agenda. It won't be necessary. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. 9B, consider vendor for new services, including lead service line water main evaluation, schedule for replacement and financing plans. Um, so this item comes to us after an RFP process, um, and meaning to review. And, um, at this time, I would take questions or a motion. Trustee Ursink.
I move to adopt resolution 2025-09.
Second.
Oh.
You jumped in the agenda item.
Run B as in Betty.
Yeah.
Yep, my bad.
I don't want to, I don't want to steal your.
You're not. I'm ready for the next one.
Yeah.
I want to make sure I'm on the board. I, I'm. I move to approve amendment to policy 44, resolution 2025-11, amendment to the fee schedule.
Second.
I'd like to make a friendly amendment to put the years in there, please, from 2025 through 2027.
Okay. I, I, we just got to go back to item B.
Oh, my.
9B. 9B.
This is lead service line, folks.
I appreciate, though, the, um, enthusiasm to test.
Let's put on that side of the thing.
Put me down to the.
Yeah, I think the hyperlink didn't work properly on this one.
Oh, God.
Jesus, who? Who did the hyperlinks on this one?
Been a long day.
Aren't we using?
No public shame in here.
Are we not on the lead service line one?
That is the.
Oh, we definitely don't.
Sub of that one. But that's not where the links are taking us. So we have to, uh, so if you click the link in the actual agenda, it takes you to a different.
Page 52 of the packet.
Let me try to find this.
Um, staff, could somebody read the motion for 9B?
I, I got it.
Oh, okay. Trustee Warren.
I hope, I move to approve Arcadis for lead service line water main evaluation, schedule for replacement and financing plans with estimated cost provided with their proposal.
Second.
Motion by trustee Warren, seconded by trustee Ursink. Um, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. 9C, consider resolution 2025-09, adoption Milwaukee County Hazard Mitigation Plan. This is, um, brought to us by the police chief. Um, it is essential that we pass this in order to, um, take advantage of the, um, hazard mitig, uh, the FEMA assistance.
All right.
Trustee Stokbrand.
Are you ready to entertain a moment?
Yes.
I move to adopt resolution 2025-09 regarding the July 2025 Milwaukee County Hazard Mitigation Plan Update.
Second.
Motion by trustee Stokebrand, seconded by trustee Ursink. Any discussion?
Just like you say, it's all in there. Flooding, tornadoes, lightning.
The whole thing.
Excellent job.
Bluff erosion. It's amazing.
Hearing no further discussion. This will be a roll call vote.
Trustee Warren?
Aye.
Trustee Arndorfer?
Aye.
Trustee McGovern?
Aye.
Trustee Arsing?
Aye.
Trustee Strugbrun?
Aye.
Trustee Kudo?
Yes.
Trustee McKay?
Aye.
Thank you. 9D, consider amendment to policy 44, lead service line program and resolution 2025-11, amendment to the fee schedule. This comes to us from village manager. And director Bushlick. Um. And finance, um, I would open it to, um, questions or a motion.
I have a question. Um. So this started with the, the PSC and the rate case, and I'm guessing that, um, it says that. Where staff has suggested a redlined approach. I mean, I understand we're adding interest to this. Is there something I should know about a redlined?
From the finance memo, I'm, um, presuming that that meant that there was a redlined.
Version.
Document of policy 44 within the packet.
Oh, okay.
Um, apologies, that just didn't.
Okay. Um, so does this, does this solve our issue with the pending rate case?
No. But what it does is that it does not, moving forward, put you in a deficit because you're not charging interest. For the 12-month period, which people can opt to delay payment. So in not charging interest, you will be paying interest on the bonds. So you're not, you're not recouping your costs.
Currently.
Correct.
We're absorbing, that was, that's what we decided as a group to do.
We have been initially. Um, uh, for the first, if you recall, we approved this policy in 2022. Prior to, um, the EPA mandating requirement of, um, and the terms for replacement of the private lead service lines. The magnitude, and just to kind of put this in perspective, next year we'll be addressing 238 private lead service lines. So I can't, in good faith, recommend that you, as a group, continue to waive interest. And not charge that on the 12-month deferral because you would not be covering your costs. And that inherently will be an issue for the PSC.
So. Let's say I decide to, I do my lead service line, I need to take out. A loan, which now will have an interest.
You will be.
If we approve this.
Um, so right now, under the policy, we would charge that individual if they choose to do the 12-month deferral and pay over a period of 12 months. We will have them pay for the cost of their private line, um, plus, uh, interest. And the interest that is, um, provided annually and determined based on the fee schedule. You're just recovering your costs.
For that one year.
Correct. I don't know of any loans that come at 0%.
So currently, though, there was, was it a one year with no interest? It was, it was three years. It's three billings. Three billings. Or I'm sorry, it's 12 utility bills over the course of three years.
They're quarterly.
Cause they're quarterly. So it's not one, it's not 12 months, it's 12, um.
Cycles.
12 cycles.
Apologies. Yeah. Incorrect wording. Thank you.
The other thing, if I may, um, I just. An additional consideration is that the PSC approved a, um, financial assistance policy whereby the water utility cannot pay more than 50% of the cost. If the utility or is carrying the interest cost. We're now paying more than 50% of the cost and we're in violation of our own policy. And that is something that PSC has pointed out to us during the rate case. And so, look, do we have any idea? You said 238 lines in 26, right? We're going to do, do we have any idea, does it matter how many people will need the loan? And what the revenue is? Does it matter? It doesn't matter.
Either way, we didn't identify a revenue source for, to cover that interest. And so it's either general, it's either going towards our, um, levy.
Project.
No, so we're either, when, when we absorb the cost, it's either coming out of levy limit or, um, it wouldn't be borrowing.
No, we just, you don't have money to fund.
Yeah.
That. You're being charged. You're, you're taking out loans. You're taking out bonds on behalf of these people and you're paying interest on those. So to not charge that interest for those people choosing. The, to pay, as Leanne said, over that three-year period.
And what is the staff cost to, to make this? Is it? A huge project?
We're doing this now. It's just, it's modifying, um, and adding that percentage. To the charge for the line. Yeah.
And so staff is prepared to absorb that extra.
Yes.
Yes, trustee Ursink?
I move to approve amendment, policy 44 and resolution 2025-11, amendment to the fee schedule.
Second.
Motion by trustee Ursink, seconded by trustee Arndorfer. Any discussion?
Is there any, any legal jeopardy for the people who were able to do this? You know, and got this interest-free three-year loan? I'm assuming that's all been vetted. No one's kind of been saying, wow, last year, you know, somebody else got a deal and now the deal has changed. We're okay. Legally.
So the question is, can we legally make this change?
Without being in legal jeopardy for people who previously got the deal and now no longer get the interest-free deal.
Do you have discretion as the board to change a policy that you created?
Okay.
I'm not the attorney, but that would be my.
Okay. I would just say I respect, I think I was on the board when we passed this policy and I, I love the spirit of it. But I'll admit, we had no idea what it would mean. And creating a over a million-dollar deficit is definitely not our intent. I don't think was within the scope of the mission of that, um, uh, policy. So I'm happy to support this this evening. All right. Um, is this a roll call vote? Yes.
Trustee Arndorfer?
Aye.
Trustee Warren?
Aye.
Trustee Arsing?
Aye.
Trustee Kudo?
Yes.
Trustee McGovern?
Aye.
Trustee Strugbrun?
Aye.
Trustee McKay?
Yes.
Motion care.
Thank you. 9E, consider resolution 2025-10, support of the Safe Roads, Save Lives Act. Um, Senate Bill 375, Assembly Bill 371. Um, this comes to us through, uh, Chief Worth. Um, it is, this is a resolution, um, that Wauwautosa is also supporting. It is in alignment with, uh, our Bike Head Safety Subcommittee Initiative. Um, and so at this time, I would, um, take any questions, um, or a motion to approve.
A quick question.
Yes.
Unless you do, no. So this just affects the city of Milwaukee, based on my reading of this?
The current legislation is for a pilot program in Milwaukee, in the city of Milwaukee, to run for a period of five years.
Is this something that you would be interested in doing in Shorewood? If it passed from, if it, down the road, perhaps?
Yes.
Okay. As would I. Okay.
Would you like to make a motion?
No, because I haven't.
Okay. Trustee Ursink.
I move to adopt resolution 2025-10, support the Safe Roads, Save Lives Act.
Second.
Um, trustee, motion by trustee Ursink, seconded by trustee McGovern. Any discussion? Hearing none. Uh, this will also be a roll call vote.
Trustee Strugbrun?
Aye.
Trustee Arsing?
Aye.
Trustee Warren?
Aye.
Trustee McGovern?
Aye.
Trustee Kudo?
Yes.
Trustee Arndorfer?
Aye.
Trustee McKay?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. Thank you. That concludes new business for this evening. We are now ready to move. All right, thank you. That concludes new business for this evening. We are now ready to move on to reports of village officials. Um, the North Shore Fire Department Board Meeting is linked um, in the materials. And um, I'd like to issue a proclamation recognizing Jake Brissette. Um, and now I've got to find it.
I can read it.
Oh, that'd be great, thank you.
Uh, proclamation recognizing Jake Brissette, whereas Jake Brissette opened the first surf shop in Shorewood and operated it for ten years. And whereas Brissette has supported the Surf at Water and other surf rider events outfitted surfers of all ages and inspired many to celebrate the surf and paddle culture of Wisconsin. And on Lake Michigan, and whereas Brissette has maintained access and enthusiasm for skateboarding as other businesses moved from the area. For skateboard, as other businesses moved from the area, and whereas Brissette has become a leader in the Shorewood business community, supporting events for all sizes, serving on the Shorewood Business Improvement District for nine years. Including three years as president, whereas Brissette has succeeded in creating a retail outlet and served as community for anyone who walked. Through the door and inspired countless of people to pursue their passions and uh, love for the outdoor recreation. And whereas Brissette will continue to call Shorewood home with his wife Elena and three children. And now therefore be it resolved, the village recognizes Jake Brissette for his expl- uh. Exemplary leadership, dedication and service to the community, maintaining our charm while enhancing Shorewood's vibrancy and attractiveness for residents and visitors alike. Brissette will maintain a vibrant online business so that followers can continue to ride, paddle and skate wherever they may go. Even, even though Lake FX Surf Shop will be closed. Uh, the good vibes are sure to continue dated uh, at Shorewood, Wisconsin, this sixth day of October, two thousand twenty five. Uh, President Anne McCaig, Village of Shore, Village of Shore.
All right.
Even though Jack.
All right, thank you, and that concludes my report. Um, any other reports of village officials?
Yep, I got one. Um, I was at the Shorewood Libraries um, book signing where they hosted Andrea Beatty, who's a. Uh, children's book author, my personal favorite. Um. If, if you have a, you're like a parent of a seven year old, you understand this is a really big deal that she was here. Um, she's got a whole series of really great books about kids who are in second grade. Um, it's also, some of her books have been made into a Netflix series called Eighty Twist Scientists, so. Uh, just um, kind of want to recognize the library for pulling this event together along with Boswell Books and probably about twenty five or thirty people there, maybe about a week ago, so. Just um, you know, good example of the good work that library is doing for the community.
Thank you. Anyone else? Trustee Ursink?
Uh, we have three more Shorewood Farmers Markets left. Um, there is still space available for our community booth, which uh, I would like to try to organize. A trustee event um, on not the Halloween uh, edition, not the last market, but so we have two Sundays next week and then the following week. Would love to try to organize something for one of those weeks, so if you're interested, send me a message and uh, figure it out.
You bet. Anyone else? All right, village manager? No report. Um, future items, we have a couple. Um. Is it trustee Stokebrand or these years?
First one is trustee Stokebrand.
Okay.
Yeah, I was interested in um. Seeing what we could do with the. With the space under the library, the village center um, to make it more usable for more different groups. And it dovetails a little bit, I guess, with the health department's space becoming available. Uh, initially, I was just thinking of adding a repair for the doors to the budget, but it's too late to do that for twenty twenty six, I think the. We need to get fresh bids at a minimum. And so um, I, I noticed here, we talk about um. For twenty twenty seven initiatives, it would co-lead by. Library Director Haley Johnson and Senior Resource Coordinator Elizabeth Price. Would business and community relations be involved in this, though? Wouldn't that be um? Where we would want this? To go?
Sure, I'd love to do it.
All right. So.
It's not bees, right?
Would you?
It's not chickens, I'm in.
Uh, I would move to approve an initiative to look for future flexibility and adaptability and uses for the village center lower level. Uh, be submitted to the village board for consideration in the next initiative process.
That was a second?
Very well said.
Okay, motion by trustee Stokebrand, seconded by trustee Kudo, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Trustee McGovern, you have the second item?
Sure, um, so. This um, I was requested to put together a resolution um. From the Village of Shorewood in support of defending the constitution and the rule of law. Um, as I'm sure you've all seen the news, um, there's just been a whole series of things that have come out of the administration in Washington DC that are really. Troubling departures from the way we normally do things in the constitution where we have three branches of government, we vote on things. Um, and a lot of institutions have not really upheld their side of the bargain in terms of providing oversight. Um, you know, Congress has abdicated, abdicated a lot of its responsibilities. Courts have done the same and there's, there's a, you know, a number of people in Shorewood that have either participated in or organized protests. Um, in opposition to some of the actions that the Trump administration has been taking. There's a national mobilization coming up on October eighteenth organized um, around the umbrella group of. Called No Kings, which is um, you know, Move On, a bunch of different progressive organizations. And as part of this, um, there's been a movement to get local governments around the country to pass resolutions. In favor of supporting the rule of law, in favor of supporting the constitution. So I, I took the liberty of drafting one up to um. Including the agenda packet, um, just kind of lists, you know. Things that the Trump administration has, has done that are unconstitutional and uh, kind of reminds us that we all took an oath as village board members to uphold the constitution. And the goal in my mind is to just provide some support to uh, members of Congress and people in other institutions that are pushing back on. Some of the um, you know, kind of the rise of authoritarianism and actions out of the Trump administration that are really unconstitutional. Um, again, with the idea of just making a statement in support of the normal constitutional order of doing things and. You know, I'm not the type of trustee to try to get bogged down in doing resolutions and just symbolic actions. I've never done one of these before, but I feel like just in line with um, you know, everything that's been going on lately. Um, that I think it's worth doing as a village, because it is, there are things that are already affecting us as Shorewood residents, things like um. You know, tariffs that we're all paying that are illegal, the courts have already ruled that they're illegal and just haven't enforced it yet. And a number of other things like that that directly influence people in Shorewood, so that's why I put this um, resolution together and would hope to get. Um. Something similar to this um, passed as a resolution just in favor of the constitution and the rule of law.
So the motion is to um, so you're asking us to consider whether to put this resolution um, on a future agenda?
Right, right, so it could be, this, this one I intended as a draft, so if people have, you know, edits they want, I'm happy to consider edits, but it just, the, the motion would be. Um, consider a resolution in support of the US Constitution and the rule of law.
And it doesn't have to go through committee, it could just go on our next, okay. So yeah, so the motion is to consider a resolution to support the constitution and rule of law to be can um, put on the next village board amendment. Yes.
Uh. Obviously, I would support something like this, so I will second.
Motion by trustee McGovern, seconded by trustee Warren, any discussion about the direction, not the resolution itself? Hearing none, all those in favor, oh.
No, I'm not gonna, nope, no, wait, withhold comments.
Okay, thank you. Um, all those in favor of placing this on the future agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any against? Motion carries. And at this time, um, oh.
You're right.
Motion to adjourn into closed session.
Is it for a second or are you looking for, second, your motion?
You gotta read it.
Trustee Warren's really good at it, or trustee Stokebrand.
I move to adjourn into closed session pursuant to nineteen point eight five one G to confer with legal counsel. On strategy regarding pending litigation on various legal matters involving East Capital Neighborhood Association versus Village of Shorewood. And pursuant to nineteen point eighteen one G deliberate or negotiate the purchasing of public properties. Where competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session to discuss prospective properties for the new DPW site.
Second.
Motion by trustee Stokebrand, seconded by trustee Ursink, any discussion?
Um, I had submitted an item that if we were going to discuss the DPW site, I had asked that we had also discussed possible negotiation strategies for adjournance first. Uh, it's not on.
Right, um, we can talk about it within the scope of um, our closed session on that item.
We can, okay.
Um, roll call vote, yes, roll call.
Trustee McGovern?
Aye.
Trustee Arndorfer?
Aye.
Trustee Ursink? Trustee Strugman?
Aye.
Trustee Kudo?
Yep.
Trustee Warren?
Aye.
President McKay?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Jerry, um, Sherri Lewis, I still see you on the, the call tonight, I just wanted to let you know that we're actually going to stop the, the recording of the meeting tonight. Um, so we appreciate you joining us and um, look forward to working with you soon.
All right, great. Well, thank you. Hope you have a great evening.
You too.
Okay.